Okay, we're ready? We're good? Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here today. And for those of members of the public joining us through cellphone, Zoom, any other type of communications, thank you for attending today's meeting. A call to order at nine o'clock in the morning. Can I have Supervisor Patel lead us off for Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Patel.
Thank you.
Next item will be acknowledgement certificate of posting.
No movement, Mr. Chair, Jim Gillio.
Is there a second?
Second, Mark Medina.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Now, now we will go into public comment, but before we do that, with the staff please provides members of the public some of the ground rules.
If you are participating on Zoom and like to make a public comment, please press star now, star nine, or press the raise your hand icon. Once you're unmuted, if you could please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Do we have any speak cards? No speak, no public comment? Okay, go ahead. Oh, he's on the presentation. He'll be D. We're still in C. You have no one?
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Rachel Mejia. I'm a resident of San Benito County.
Do you wish to make a public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Do I go ahead now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a mom to four kids. I live in Hollister and we homeschool already. So that part of shelter in place has been terrible for us. However, we're sorely missing our community of friends, playdates, and parks. And so we normally look forward to those park days each week and they greatly enrich our homeschool experience. And so we hope it won't be too much longer before we can meet with our community of friends in parks again. It's been difficult, to say the least, to fill those gaps with blocks in our neighborhood, doing the shelter in place. For a while, my son and I would walk to a nearby basketball hoop and shoot baskets together until one day we showed up and the basketball hoop was blocked off. And so that was very frustrating for me and very difficult for me to explain to my nine-year-old son why he can no longer play basketball with his mom with our own ball in our own neighborhood. So, and then another day I tried to take them, my kids, for a hike and the hiking trail was blocked off. So that also was very frustrating. And then immediately after, I was able to take them all into a grocery store. So it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't seem that these regulations online promoting health of, you know, the community. Another frustration for me is that my younger son sees a speech therapist weekly and so we're no longer able to meet with her. And we've been trying to continue his meetings via Zoom calls, but as I'm sure you know, it's not easy to do stuff like that over Zoom. It's not easy to keep him engaged over, you know, through a computer screen rather than meeting in person with his speech pathologist. I think meetings like that should be considered essential for children like him who benefit from meeting in person with therapists for, you know, their continued health and growth and development. So that's all I really have to say in conclusion. I thank you for your time and I just hope that you'll consider the impact that this prolonged shelter in place is having on people like me and my children and on our health and wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the public information, there is an item on the agenda that we'll discuss about the effects it has on the community under item number 20 and 21. So for the time being, please hold off your comments. Dave, you have any speaking cards?
Yes, we do. David, if you could please state your name.
David Patrick, I'm a resident of San Benito County. Are we commenting on the COVID-19 shutdown now?
Not right now, sir.
I'm sorry?
No, the answer is no. We're gonna wait till item number 19.
Okay, thank you.
April, if you could please state your name.
Hi, my name is April Rail and I'm a resident of San Benito County. And so are we allowed to comment on the issue of the face masks being mandatory?
Not right now, madam. It's gonna be number 18.
20, actually, for the record.
Okay, I guess it's very hard to understand, guys, with the mask from, I think, our end. It's very hard to understand the words that you're saying.
Madam, that item will be discussed under number 20.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessa, if you could please state your name.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, my name is Jessa Fraser. I have a comment about the lockdown. I'm not sure if this is the correct time. I'm confused.
It is not the correct time. It will be under item number 20.
Okay, should I raise my hand again at that time?
Yes, please.
Courtney, if you could please state your name.
Good morning, this is Courtney Evans, owner of Kamal Yoga Studio. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Perfect. I am speaking here at public comment to once again request a complaint process for the community to keep track, to trace the public voice and record it. Ray Espinoza, you've heard my request before. San Benito County Sheriff's Department, I beg you to get involved in this process. City of Hollister, also responsible. Public Health Department, also responsible. Please place this on an agenda. Please have a process for the public to keep track, to trace, and record our elected officials. I also would like to add that I think it would be a life skill to teach our kids the local level on the process of government, how important it is to be involved and to have a relationship with the people that are making choices in our community. Thank you so much. I hope you guys are having a good morning.
Thank you.
If you could please state your name for the record. You have been unmuted. If you could please state your name. You may need to unmute yourself. I will go to the next caller. Elia, if you could please state your name.
Good morning, Elia Salina. Thank you for taking my, taking my call, I guess. Anyway, I'd like to bring to the attention this morning to the entire board. I am very concerned about Recology. You guys approved a consent item and I completely understand why it was done because there's a contract. However, my concern is that Recology sent out the Prop 218 forms so that the public could protest. However, there's confusion and there's legality issues with Prop 218, way to protest is because that is only for property owners and rate payers should be the ones that should be able to protest this rate increase. So I'd like to bring to the attention to the board that there are many, many renters out there that do not qualify as protesters under this form. I would like, again, to ask Recology, because I've done it before at the city council meeting, and unfortunately I didn't make it to the Board of Supervisors meeting, is Recology has the option to stay the rate increase because we are in this economic crisis. They have the, they can show compassion to stay the rate increase for one year to see where we are next year, maybe even six months, because this is gonna take effect in July and the protest must go in by June. Another thing that I've asked Recology to do, because we are in this crisis, is that if they're not going to put a stay for a rate increase, can they not charge their rate payers for so many months because they don't have money to pay this right now? People have lost their jobs. People have, their hours have been reduced. There's gotta be some kind of compassion from Recology. And I ask you individual Board of Supervisors, individual supervisors, to please contact Recology. I believe that Kathleen Oberintegrated, she's a contractor for the city, San Juan Batista, Hollister, San Juan Batista County. I believe it's her duty as a contractor, the in-between person, to be advocating for the citizens of this county to Recology to please stay the rate increase. It's not like it's too late. Protest has a deadline, but Recology has the option to stay the rate increase for another year and/or reduce and stop the monthly charges for a certain period of time. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next.
You have been unmuted. If you could please state your name for the record.
My woman.
Go ahead and speak.
So after weeks of listening to the rants from both sides of the deck, I've decided to chime in. The fact is, we are in uncharted waters. I don't believe that any of your elected officials here today ever thought their position would require these kind of actions. The unfortunate truth is that, well, the shit hits the fan. Here we are. How would you proceed now as to who we would be going forward? We live in one of the best places on earth, San Benito County. I have two children, one a junior, the other about to graduate eighth grade. We officially follow the advice from our leaders. We shelter this place, stock up our freezers, school, and work well.
Sure, your item will be discussed on number 20.
You have been unmuted. Please state your name for the record. You may need to unmute yourself.
No more comments. Thank you very much. I kinda stepped a little bit fast. We're now gonna go to presentations and recognitions. We have Sean to make a proclamation on declaring May as water awareness month. Sean?
Thank you Supervisor De La Cruz. Good to see all you guys.
Sean, we can barely hear you.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, I'm here to just remind you, you know, during all these major events that we're experiencing right now, that we still need to be efficient with our water supply. Every day I come to you guys and I try to stress at this time of year because this is the start of our peak water use when we start getting warmer and more irrigation required for the use.
Sean, this is-
I mean, read the water proclamation. Whereas California's arid and semi-arid climate is ambitious and evolving economy, its continually growing population and climate change have combined to make shortages and conflicting demands enormous. And whereas the health, welfare, and quality of life of our community depends on a reliable, high-quality water supply, whereas the state, county, cities, and concerned citizens make strong efforts to foster wise decisions considering water issues and water use, and whereas California has enacted legislation to promote sustainable groundwater management practices, whereas water softening contributes significant amounts of salt to wastewater and degrades our water supply, our insults, and wastewater quality that exceeds regulatory limits and hampers our recycled water efforts. Whereas the fact that California will experience periodic droughts, whereas efficient use of water is critical not only during droughts, but at all times. And whereas during May 2020, San Benito County is inviting everyone to find out ways to save water both at work and at home. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of San Benito County does proclaim May 2020 as the water awareness month and urge all citizens, businesses, industries, institutions, agencies to review their water use and water systems for water use efficiency and to contact the Water Resources Association of San Benito County for water savings ideas and assistance. Thank you Supervisors.
Thank you. Is there, is there a motion to accept the proclamation? Is there a second?
Second, Patel.
Motion by Gillio, second by Patel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
No, sorry. I couldn't hear him. I didn't, I-
It was a 4 to 1?
4 to 1.
Okay.
I can't in good conscience support it when I didn't even understand what he said. Yeah, and that's fine, but, you know, it's a presentation of the public.
Okay. You wanna say anything else, Sean? No? He's no longer on. Okay. All right, let's move on then. Department head announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I wanna thank the Technology Department. They actually came in and put laptops for you guys to actually show your faces for the community. That was one of the requests that the community had. So I wanna thank them and also thank your board. With one other item here, I wanted to also ask the board, we'd like to go ahead and pull item number 22 from the agenda.
22?
It's a regular agenda item. Remove it, actually. We're removing it from the agenda. And that's all the announcements that I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, questions to the CEO from the board? None? Okay, now we'll go to board announcements. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Hernandez and I have been really hard at work on the Roadmap to Recovery Ad Hoc Committee. We've had, you know, a couple of meetings with our two cities and staff and officials. We're trying to work with businesses to reopen safely, taking into account public health and safety first and getting them up online and open to the public to, for services that is much needed. All our businesses, I feel, I'm sure Supervisor Hernandez agrees with me, are essential. We both kinda hated that phrase where you have essential and non-essential. That's, I think anyone who has a business and the employees that work in those businesses are essential. Everybody in this community is essential. But we've had at least about 10 workshops in the past two weeks. They all been successful. It's phenomenal, the work that our staff do, say Alonso and Edgar Narosco. They've done a great job. EDC has been a fantastic partner. The Chamber of Commerce, San Benito Chamber of Commerce has been a tremendous help. And the participants and the presenters have been very informative. And one of the things that, you know, when we first started out with this personally, I thought, man, this is gonna be, you know, a real tough assignment. You know, we're talking about businesses and people that are struggling. We know they're struggling. But what I found is that there's a tremendous amount of optimism. And that even included last night when we had the personal groomers, personal care folks for a workshop. And the innovation and that they have, they do want to be part of the solution, not the problem. And, you know, I'm just heartened by that. They wanna keep the public safe. Social distancing is important to them as well. And we gotta do everything as a county that we possibly can to support these businesses as they get back on their feet. We still have a few outlined areas that we need to work on. I hope that the committee will continue to make an effort with its outreach in partnership with our two cities. And also, I think it's very, very important that we take another direction with the testing and work with our public health officials, Tracy Bautron. She has done a phenomenal job. And I was contacted by LULAC, I think Supervisor Gillio was too, with concerns about a very, a need out there with our farm workers. And I agree with that. I, I think, you know, that's a very vulnerable population, a lot of people. And one of the things that population has is that they work very close together in the fields or in the processing plants. And they're also very family orientated. And we're going into a season where the weather is getting nicer. We all have the urge to get together with family and friends. And the Latino population, you know, are probably one of the most family orientated folks that we have in our community. And I think we need to kinda up the ante and try to get and encourage more testing with that population. And I hope the board supports that. I hope our staff supports it and we can move forward. And I'm sure Supervisor Hernandez has more comments about the work we've been doing the last couple of weeks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Supervisor Patel. Supervisor Gillio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to remind people about the Great Plates Program for any restaurants that are interested in participating, as well as folks that are, of, qualify for the program, generally speaking, seniors. And we've been doing a lot of outreach. I've seen in social media, different nonprofit groups like Rotary, that sort of thing, trying to target folks that may be able to use that service and need that service. It's great for both ends to kinda kickstart restaurants as well as get people food that desperately need it. So I'm happy for that. And thank you to our OES team and our public health team and admin for getting that, getting that off the ground and rolling and making sure that San Benito County was not forgotten in that state program. I wanted to thank our, our staff and especially the community for getting us into Phase 2B, I guess is what the state's calling it. So we're one of the few counties that is in Phase 2B. And what I saw over the weekend was a lot of people interested in getting out and a lot of people taking safety seriously. There were some national news stories that Hollister, San Benito County is doing it the right way. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that, staff and the community for, for doing that and taking this seriously. And hopefully when it's time, we can move into our next phase as quickly as, as possible. For Supervisor Patel's comments on the ag workers, 100% agree. We gotta figure out a way to get some, either like a drive-through type of testing or a testing that works when they're not at work because their work hours are much different than many folks. And I think it's really important that we figure out how to do that. I personally reached out to the hospital and one of the hospital board members to see if they're interested in some sort of a public-private partnership. That hasn't gone anywhere yet, but I'm working on that. And if anybody else has any ideas or innovative thoughts or strategies, I'd be happy to, to work with you or hear about that. COG for Supervisor Hernandez and Chairman De La Cruz. If we could get some regular updates on COG. It's been going on five months, six months now, and we're not hearing a lot about what's going on with COG. And for the community, what COG is, is the Council of Governments that handles essentially the, the big thing we're doing right now, obviously, is the Measure G implementation as well as the Highway 25 expansion and a ton of local roadwork as well. And, and just in general, from what I know, what's going on is you'll see a bunch of local county roadwork. We call it Measure G quick start programs through Harry and our RMA department. Greg, we have him here, our engineer in the back. We've got a lot of road projects you're gonna see starting this summer. The way the projects work, they wanna wait for the rains to be over. And then you'll see, pretty soon you'll see the contracts coming to the board to, for award and construction will begin. And there's gonna be a lot of roadwork coming this summer. So I wanted to thank our, our team for that. We haven't forgot and dropped the ball and let those things down during this COVID crisis. We're continuing to do the communities and counties' work and I'm really proud and I think the community will be as well when you see the amount of roadwork that's gonna start here pretty soon. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for your time.
Thank you Supervisor Gillio. On break, let's invite Mary at the next board meeting, I think it's June 2nd, to make an update, presentations and some, why there are some delays. Good point Supervisor Gillio. We'll do that. And then Supervisor Hernandez can also provide update to at that meeting, too. Perfect. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we have a meeting coming up this Thursday. You know, there's been obviously a lot of delay, but ultimately we're working on, on a, you know, 25 and a lot of local stuff. But, you know, I think the updates that are gonna come are gonna be a lot of, you know, the, after Thursday's meeting and with Mary presenting, I think we'll have a clearer picture. I don't wanna speak for, for the rest of the COG board, but we'll, we'll have some updates pretty soon. As far as, you know, what we've been working on with Supervisor Patel, the focus group meetings, it's been really productive. They, they, you know, a lot of folks are really engaged. Obviously, this last group was all the more engaged and then there was a share of disappointment because ultimately they're the ones that are on the sidelines waiting to, to get back in. The clarity that I've heard is their argument is they've worked really hard at living pretty much their DNA of being, of protecting public health. They, they even have a new updated COVID-19 barbicide certification, I guess. So now it allows them to be a lot more, a lot safer, I guess, with, with whatever that barbicide, the effects of it and how they, how they, how they manage their, their customers. So they're, even though they're not working, they already are doing their, I mean, they're doing the best that they can to do their homework. You know, Michelle Perry from Salon 218, she presented a very thorough explanation of literally start to finish before someone comes in. Scheduling, the, the social distancing, the protections, the mitigation measures within the business once they come in. Like there's, she, she did a lot of work along with a collaborative. You know, we got an email just recently, I think it was a 12, and forgive me if I'm throwing off the number, but I know it was a good amount of salons. They're all working together. They're all talking. They're all basically saying, we're ready to come back to work and protect the public at the same time. So I'm hoping we really start considering what that means and pushing a little bit harder. I know we already have worked hard sending out a letter to the state. I feel like it's still, I mean, ultimately there's a standstill in our county and I'm hoping we could push a whole lot harder. I know there's a lot of counties and cities ultimately that are, you know, they're starting to line up to defend themselves against the state because, you know, ultimately there's, there's plenty of evidence that this thing needs to end now. And, you know, there's, if anything, there's, there's, the counties were very unified and the cities were unified from March 18th on, but now the divide is growing and even across other states. It seems like there's a growing trend with judges trying to argue the case of protecting, you know, like religious freedoms. I know that was something that was supposed to be considered essential from the get-go. And for some reason, it wasn't considered essential, which is where it gets the argument of- of violation of constitutional rights. So there's, I'm sharing pretty much the sentiment of the business community and just the same of the citizens of this county. I know that we're going to have a more thorough conversation, but I wanted to make sure to touch on those things, to a certain extent, set the stage for item number 20. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. Supervisor Medina?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. And I will report nothing, too. Okay. Is there any changes or deletions that the board wished to address right now on consent? None? What's the pleasure of the board?
Any public comments, Mr. Chair?
Sure. Do you have a public comments from any of the consent items?
If you wish to make a public comment, please press star now or raise your hand.
For the consent items, please, consent items.
No one? Okay.
Make a motion to approve consent.
Is there a second?
A second. Mark Medina?
Okay, motion by Supervisor Patel, second by Supervisor Medina. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Five zero.
Five zero, yes. Now we'll go regular agenda, number 20. Tracy?
Good morning. I have a PowerPoint presentation. I think Dolfi is going to share that screen. Is it posted up there? Okay, so I will move forward to provide a brief update of COVID-19 in San Bernardino County. So the first slide is our current dashboard regarding our COVID-19 cases. As you can see, we currently have six active cases that we, in the county, 53 recovered and two deaths. We continue to monitor these on a daily basis. The next slide, I wanted to update you on the Stage 2 status that the county is currently in. So on May 12th, the governor did advance us into Stage 2 with some early Stage 2 expansions. He allowed for curbside retail, manufacturers to open, logistics, childcare for those outside of the central workforce, office-based businesses, but is still encouraging us to tell work if possible, and limited services, which he identified as car washes, pet grooming, and landscape gardening, also outdoor museums and any open gallery spaces or other public spaces of modification. At this time, he also offered an opportunity for counties to submit a variance attestation, which would allow the counties to move into an expanded Stage 2. The county worked diligently on completing this 12-page form to provide data, working with our epidemiologists and our public health staff to attest to what was necessary in the document to get us to the expanded Stage 2, with the support of a letter from a board of supervisors, as well as a letter from our hospital that agreed that we were ready to move into the expanded Stage 2 variants. We submitted that document last Tuesday morning at 8:30, and it was posted to the CDPH, California Department of Public Health website on Wednesday. It was reviewed, it's not necessarily approved, it's just reviewed by them. We've worked with them to provide further detail. Once it's posted, we have the green light to move into the expanded Stage 2, which allows for destination, retail stores, shopping malls and swap meets, dine-in restaurants, which include indoor and outdoor eating, and some modifications for some schools. The governor provided guidance for those expanded Stage 2 industries. It's important that we follow the guidance. They are listed on his website at covid19.ca.gov. The county does not need to approve the Stage 2 expansion. It's required to review the guidance and the checklist and ensure that your industry is following them. Our county recommends that you're following the guidance for your related industry. There is a copy, post copy of the completed guidance checklist at your business, so that the patrons are aware that you are following the guidance. We're asking that you self-certify and post that you have completed a checklist and a recommendation for your business. I just wanted to remind people that should the guidance not be followed and the county is at risk of a possible surge of cases, we will need to reassess the need for a county-specific shelter-in-place order. So we are really urging the industries to adhere to the guidance that the governor has laid out for these expanded Stage 2 industries, as well as the other industries. And if they have questions regarding the guidance, we'd be happy to discuss those with the industry, but it seems for the most part that they're pretty clear. And I know that numerous restaurants have opened, and we're hoping that they're adhering to the guidance that the governor's provided. I know there's been a lot of questions regarding the face covering order. Our health officer, Dr. David Gillerducci, continues to monitor the need for the face covering order. And when he feels it's appropriate, he will assess that the ability, he will assess if we can reduce it to a recommendation versus an order. This is a sign that we have created that shows that your business is open and you're self-certifying that you're following the guidance of the governor. Hopefully, you'll see these locally in our community with all the businesses that are open. It's really important to remember social distancing. I know that there's been a lot of questions around restaurants, and do you need to wear face covering in the restaurant while you're trying to enjoy your meal? And the answer to that is no, you do not need to wear a face covering while you're enjoying a meal. We just ask that you wear them at any other time. Yesterday, the governor provided a press conference, and he noted that there are 24 counties to date that have filed for a local variance of attestations. Most of the counties are smaller rural counties. He encouraged the members of the public to visit the website to track the county data. He stated that they've been tracking the number of hospitalizations, as well as ICUs over the past 14 days, and we've seen a decline, which is, which is great news. They will continue to monitor the hospitalizations, ICUs, PPE, and also the skilled nursing facilities. The governor did provide an ability for the bigger counties to attest a variance attestation a little differently, because they were having a hard time meeting the attestation, and so that's also on the website. We do not need to complete the second attestation. Once we've attested that we meet the standards, it doesn't get revoked from us. So it's, we just have to evaluate the data ongoing. The governor also did indicate that if the rates continue to be steady, he announced that he would be making a statement in the next few weeks. Yesterday at the focus group, I think I said two weeks, but it's actually a few weeks, so I wanted to clarify that. To allow for some in-store retail with modifications, sporting events without spectators, and he also indicated that haircuts. So I'm making the assumption that he means beauty salons, but I could be wrong, but he specifically said haircuts. There's also some new guidance already out on the faith-based community that allowing for some modifications for faith-based counseling and for faith-based workers to resume operations such as an office would. There's still no allowance for congregations to reconvene in person. That guidance is listed under the state guidance under limited services, if you're interested in seeing that guidance. Just a reminder, Supervisor Gilio indicated that we have the Great Plates Program for our senior population. Here is the flyer, it's also on our website. We're encouraging people to contact the coordinator, Yelo Lopez, and his email's listed there, it's also on our website. We're really excited for this for our senior population and high-risk individuals in the age of 60 to 64. Lastly, I just wanted to provide some data regarding our testing site, our alternate testing site, OptumServe, which is located at the Veterans Building. We have been informed that there has been a delay in some of the results being received. If you look here, you can see that we've tested 785 people since May 5th. We are still waiting for 246 results. So I know there's been some delay in the receiving the results. Out of those results, we've only had one positive test. So that's exciting. We're hopeful that the 246 remaining results will also be negative. And so we encourage everyone to continue to get tested. I know that Supervisor Patel and Supervisor Gilio spoke of testing for the migrant community. We are working together to figure out a way to offer expanded testing. It is just a reminder that the testing site is open until 8:00 PM. We do have some of our public health staff outreach in this community and assisting them in making an appointment, and we've worked with LULAC as well. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get them tested more. We're also exploring moving the testing site to San Juan Batista, Aromas area, to provide for a different population, and they don't have to travel as far to receive the testing. So we'll be exploring that moving forward. And unfortunately, Dr. Gillerducci is not available today to be at the board meeting. He had other commitments, and so he's not able to be here for any questions. But if you do have questions, you can email us, and we'd be happy to get back to you. And also, here's our website. It's really important to remember that covid19.ca.gov website is very helpful with the guidance. That's what we go to for our guidance, and so I just encourage individuals to continue to go there for questions regarding the guidance. Off for my presentation, if there's any questions?
Sure, yes. Supervisor Anthony Patel?
Okay, thank you. Tracy, I just have a question. I, you know, we get hundreds of pages of information almost every day, it seems like, and guidances for different things. And you've done a fantastic job. Your office has done a great job in keeping up with it. And I'm very proud of where the county is with our, you know, control of this virus. Anyway, I had a constituent send me an email that was asking about RV parks and so forth. And it's hard for me to memorize all the guidances, and I wasn't sure if that, if they're able to move and open different RV parks throughout the county. I know that's, you know, a source of TOT tax for us and really some recreation within the region. Are those facilities able to operate on this 2B with guidance?
I think you're asking for RV parks, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that the word you, RV, okay. I'm not, I'm not sure. I can, I can look. I would have to look at the guidance. I know that initially, there was some concern around them, and they were just like 1,000 trails was allowing individuals to stay there and not have to move. I think it might default to the actual park, but I can, I can take a look at the orders and let you know.
I appreciate that. And you could just send me a message or a short email, and I'll get back to that constituent. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Patel. Supervisor Jim Gilio?
Thank you. This is Jim Gilio. Tracy, thank you again, and I do appreciate all your hard work. The question about the mask order kind of came up with, we had, just looking at the numbers on your presentation, if you kind of do just some very, very rough math with the testing, it looks like about 500 tests were done over the last week or weekend, and we had, I think, one positive. So the question that I was asked was, is there, is there like a, is there a number or a formula that, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm asking you, or if we need to get here from Dr. Gillerducci, and then you can get back to us and the community, that'd be great as well. Is it, you know, 1,000 tests a week, or, I'm just making up numbers here, because I don't know, but is it 800 tests a week, zero infections for two weeks? Or is it that simple? Or is there, is there something else that we need to think about with the mask order? Is it just numbers, or is there, is there more, more to it? And is there any way we can give some more information to the community about what they can expect maybe in the coming weeks, depending on how we do with infections and rates and all those things?
I don't know the easy answer to that. I don't believe there is a formula. I did talk with Dr. Gillerducci, and he felt that it was still necessary, considering that we're opening the county. But he does continue to monitor it. He does know that there is a desire from some of the members in the community to have it as a recommendation and no longer an order, and he continues to assess it moving forward. I can definitely talk with him again and discuss the concerns and questions that you've raised, and I'm hoping he'll be at the next board meeting on Tuesday, and he can answer some of those questions for you as well.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I just wanted to pass along one of the questions that I had gotten this morning. Thank you.
That concludes your, thank you Supervisor Gilio. Supervisor Mark Medina?
Yeah, I had the same question on the masks, but the, you know, dealing, there's no criteria, it seems like, and I know you'll work on that. But the other question, when we're at Stage 2A or Stage 2, the other 57 counties, when they're going into, I know when you're eating, of course, you don't need your mask, but when you go into a place of business, are masks required? Is that part of the Stage 2?
I know that, excuse me, I know that Mari County and Santa Cruz have a face covering order. I believe Santa Clara County has a recommendation, so it depends on the county statewide. I think there's a variance amongst the counties.
That's not part of Stage 2 and 1/2, when we did the attestation, that we had to have masks to go into businesses? So that's still highly recommended?
Did you ask if, in our attestation, we said that we had to wear face covering?
Yes.
We indicated in our attestation that we do have a face covering order.
Okay.
In some of the, in some of the governor's guidance, it indicates that they should be wearing face coverings. I think it's more specific to the workforce, but it's, you know, it's different per industry. So, you know, our face covering order supersedes that, because it's a local order.
Okay. Then the second one is, I just wanted to reiterate, and I know you said it several times, is with the restaurants and the businesses that are opening now, is it a self-certification? So no one from the county or from the city has to go to your place of business and sign up on it. It's a self-certification, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the last one is dealing with, and this might be for you and staff, is dealing with our local parks and our local, you know, let's just say, Bellato Park, along with the Historical Park, Vets Park. Are they now open, or are we still having them closed?
The parks can be open. The areas that need to be closed are the gathering areas, so picnic areas, playground areas, and like barbecue areas. Those areas are still to remain closed per the governor's order. But the open spaces can be open. The governor indicated that, you know, you can go to the park and have a picnic with your family. They're still trying to restrict that to the household, but the parks, and I believe all of our parks are open. The only park that I believe is not open is Vets Park, which is considered a sports complex. But every other park should be open. The tennis courts are open at Dunn Park. I know that Ridge Mark is working on reopening their tennis courts. I spoke with Bob Tiffany yesterday regarding that. I think they should be moving forward and opening those today with some guidance from the local association. But as far as I know, all the parks should be open outside of the restricted areas.
Ray, Barbara, could you validate that, just to make sure that all the parks are open, that are required to be open? That concludes my questions. Thank you very much, Tracy. I appreciate it.
Thank you Supervisor Medina. Supervisor Peter Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Peter Hernandez is here. So I, one question actually I have, and it's actually to staff. I noticed that Tracy, our director's presentation wasn't on the website. I mean, is it possible we make sure that we have that for public consumption? I know for me, I would have liked to read that presentation beforehand. So the question that I have to Tracy is, you mentioned that there was a decline in hospitalizations. So are you attributing it to the shelter-in-place? Why you think those hospitalizations dropped, Tracy, or the doctor?
So the data that I reported was what the governor reported, that's statewide. I would assume that the assumption is that, yes, it is due to the shelter-in-place. would assume that the assumption is that yes, it is due to the shelter in place. He didn't indicate that. I don't know. I don't have the report on our local hospital. The last I heard was we had one, one covid-19 positive patient in the ICU. If our public health staff is, I don't think they're listed as a panelist, but they may have more data on our local hospital. And I know that Dr. Bogie nor Dr. Giller Ducci are on the call today to answer those questions either.
Yeah. Thank you, Tracy. And I know it's, it's a tough position to try to interpret the state's information. I know you're working hard, and I, I appreciate your hard work. I mean, my question is more like trying to understand the assumptions of what the state is, because really, I feel like this is digesting it through a, a kind of very foggy filter. And the reason why I say that is because, you know, I've also just read an article in Benito Link that actually mentions that people are not going to the hospital for other, other serious conditions. They're, you know, they're, they have symptoms of a heart attack or stroke. And this is actually Dr. Bogie that mentioned this on that article. So they're, they're staying away from hospitals. So is there a decline in hospitalizations because of covid cases, because we're trying, we're, we're doing such an amazing job or a perfect job of controlling it? Or is it because, because people are just staying away from the doctor right now? I mean, and so it just, broad statements like that, I think, should come with a little bit more evidence. Otherwise, it kind of creates, I think, that, you know, which is what I'm trying to avoid, and to a certain extent, encourage, as far as, trying to avoid the division, encourage unity. I think clarity would, would definitely help. Because, yeah, that, that broad statement kind of makes it a little confusing. And, and I know that there's, there's conversations out there about the cases. You know, we had six cases just recently. But just to be clear, I think there, there needs to be an understandable expectation that cases are going to increase when your testing increases. I know we, we went from 25 a day now to roughly over 100 people a day on average, which is a lot. So, so that's, that's good. But nonetheless, it, you know, provides a little bit of clarity. Instead of panic, it shouldn't provide panic. You're going to expect more cases when you're testing a whole lot more. So, and then you meant, the last question I had, Tracy, is the face covering, you said, so it's, it's an order. Is, is that a requirement? I, I thought I heard you allude to that it's a requirement for, for the business community, but is it a requirement for the customers?
Yes. It's our local health officer order for face covering. So it mandates all of the public to wear face coverings when they enter into a business or in public. It's the same order that we've had in effect. It hasn't changed.
Okay. Well, and, and, yeah, the only reason why I ask that is because, you know, I know the management of that has been really tough. So it, it, to a certain extent, it puts the liability on the business and the assumption on how to, I mean, I know that I've gone to certain businesses where they say, you can't even, you, we don't even want you anywhere near our business if you don't have a mask. And there's some businesses that are, that are, can't, they're not going to mon, monitor it for obvious reasons. They can't. It's just hard. You know, people could easily just say, I have a health issue, and it's a dead deal at that point. So just the efficacy, or to a certain extent, the success of a mask order, is what I'm asking about. When, you know, you, you can't carte blanche expect the public to just follow through when there's really no, no clear, or it, it would be almost impossible to implement anyways. But, you know, again, it's, it's just to speak clarity to the conversation. Thank you for, for all that you do, Tracy.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. Supervisor Medina?
Yes, just to clarify, one of Peter's questions is, when you look at the daily report that the San Antonio County Public Health Services sends out, they do have something called the positivity rate. So when you look at the positivity rate, as the amount of cases, or I should say, amount of people being tested increase, that positivity rate has been dropping, which is, which is good. That's what, kind of what you're asking is, yeah, we have more people that are being tested, but that positivity rate is decreasing. And I believe I read somewhere, correct me if I'm wrong, the governor did say that he is looking at the positivity rate as one of the attributes in order to move on to the next phase. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So when you look at that, Peter, just, so you know, it's, this was in the six, I think it was in the fours or fives at one time, and it's been dropping. That's what we're seeing. We're seeing 400 people being tested. Jim mentioned earlier, 500 people being tested, 499 were negative. So that's going to, that positivity rate's going to decrease dramatically throughout the, as we, as a population increases of testing. So.
So you're saying that the increase in testing is going to decrease the amount of positive cases?
Positive, the positivity rate. Because what's happening is, if you have more people being tested, your positivity, and they're, they're negative, your positivity rate decreases.
Yeah. Well, yeah, by, by default. Yeah. And I, and honestly, I, I agree with that, and I appreciate that. I mean, I know it creates a lot of other questions, because what is, what is, what is the reason? What is the reason why? What is the reason why, sorry? What is the reason why the case has dropped? Is it because it's summertime now, and, and now the, this, this, this thing is running its course, right? There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, exactly.
But I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that statement. I think, in my, in my mind, I feel like there's, there's an obvious, you know, things are changing, and right now things are getting better. And that's not just subject to even San Antonio County. I think that's all across the country, is a lot of states are opening up. And now, you know, it just begs the question, is, is it because of the shelter in place, as if it was perfect? Or is it because this thing is running its course, and the severity of it is, is specific maybe to, to sensitive populations? I think that should be the consideration. I know that going forward, one of the questions I have is, because I, I don't foresee that our community can handle this again, or, or any other small community, another lockdown. So really, at that point, is it mitigating the risk, and then mitigating protecting the, the sensitive folks? That would make sense to me. But, but a carte blanche, whole county shutdown, I feel like it just, it's going to destroy communities, and it's going to divide communities. But, but it's, to your point, that positivity rates is, is a good thing to consider, for sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions before I open up to the public? Ray?
I just have a comment, a few comments, elaboration on what was said. There has been some great work with the Great Plates Program. We have 90 seniors signed up, which is great. We have eight confirmed restaurants as well. So the, so everything goes live tomorrow. So we're really excited about that. There's still outreach occurring as of today. Whether the doctor, you know, highly recommends a, a face covering order in the future, the state was still kind enough and really great on their part. They provided us 26,000 surgical masks this morning for, for businesses. So it's a great thing, great work from OES and staff. Appreciate all the work, continued outreach to still, you know, obtain PPE and to make sure that we're, you know, have those available for the community. So I wanted to make sure that the board knew that.
Thank you, Ray. Good job. Okay. Let me open up to the public?
Can I make you a comment?
Yes, Supervisor.
Just quickly, Ray, do we have a plan yet to roll those PPE supplies out to businesses? How do they ask for them? How do they get them? And what's the refill procedure, et cetera?
Yeah, thank you for that. Actually, we're working on that now. Actually, OES is actually working on a plan, and we'll be publishing that hopefully today, and make sure that we outreach to the, to the businesses. So yes, yeah.
Supervisor Gilio? Okay, perfect. Good question. Okay, let's open up to the public speakers.
David, if you could please state your name?
Hello, this is David Patrick.
Go ahead, David.
Okay, so, so last week, the interim health director stated that we will likely not get back to normal until we get a vaccine. What science is that based on, and what fact is that based on? SARS vaccine has been worked on since 2002 with no vaccine. There is no vaccine for MERS or any other common cold. The fact is, there are no coronavirus vaccines ever developed. This statement alone should disqualify the health director, and he should resign, especially since he can't even fit us in today. The truth of the matter is, he, we don't know if we will ever get one. Also, the mask edict should immediately be withdrawn. Wearing masks has no meaningful effect on covid-19. April 6, analysts of internal medicine found this in a study. South Korean researchers had four patients with covid-19 coughed into a petri dish without masks, while wearing disposable surgical masks, and while wearing cloth masks. Neither mask meaningfully decreased viral load coughed into the petri dishes. April 7, WHO said there is no need for healthy people to wear masks, and that there is currently no evidence that wearing a mask by healthy persons in wider community setting, including universal masking, can prevent them from infection. WHO also said, community masking could lead to the false sense of security and cause people to ignore other evidence-based measures like hand washing. WHO said masks should be reserved for people who have covid-19 or are in regular contact with the disease, like caretakers and hospital workers. WHO also said, healthy people that wear masks might touch their face more, which could increase their risk of covid-19. And I've actually seen that on this video with you guys. The fact is, there is no science-based reason for masks. The, the mask edict must be rescinded. The continued lockdown of businesses must end. The board should immediately vote to become a sanctuary county for a future rules by decree. Rule by decree is defined as allows the ruler to arbitrarily edit law without approval of the legislative assembly. Does that sound familiar? The counties of California must immediately put into place measures to counter rule by decree. If citizens do not monitor the government, they could be controlled by the fiat of a small group of people. We will be closely monitoring now and in the future. Get out of our way. It's quite obvious the current orders are unnecessary, unwarranted, as well as unconstitutional. Our liberty and our freedoms are not negotiable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
April, if you could please state your name?
Hi, my name is April Rail, and I'm a representative of San Antonio County. And I'm calling because I pretty much agree with everything the previous caller said. And I'd like to add that, on top of being really unlawful at this point, because we can't prove that there's any kind of an emergency happening in our community, the masks continue to kind of cause a state of terror in everybody. People aren't going to the doctor and aren't going to the hospital when it might be necessary, because everywhere they look and everywhere they go, people are covering their faces as if there's something horrible happening around us, when in fact, there's, there's nothing happening at all. And I would just really like for this to end. You know, we need to, we need to stop this, we need to stop enabling our state to continue something that isn't lawful and shouldn't be required at this point. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jessa, if you could please state your name?
I'm Jessa Fraser. I live in San Antonio County. I have three young children. When my babies were tiny, and whooping cough, RSV, and influenza, respectively, were running through our community, I made the choice to stay home as much as possible. When I was out, I made the choice to wipe down shopping carts and even wear face covering to protect my family. I took responsibility, and that comes with the blessing of liberty. We have been blessed with liberty, which is not the freedom from responsibility, but the freedom to be responsible. Our state government has taken away our liberty in the name of emergency by this unprecedented shelter-in-place order. As the weeks have rolled on, and the data has come in, we now see that this virus does not warrant such drastic or severe measures. Fifteen days to slow the spread became stay home, stay safe, whether you can feed your family or not. We value life, but it's irrational to believe that we can keep any case load of a virus to zero. Pandemics will run their course. It is not logical to think that we can sustain this kind of response to every pandemic that comes in our future, and they will come. If this is to be our response in the name of saving lives, will we be shut down for every bad flu season? It's irrational to think that we can continue to sacrifice livelihoods unless the ultimate goal is to drive citizens into complete government dependence. It's time for liberty to be returned to our citizens. The elected officials of this coun, country taken up to serve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. I might be wrong, and please correct me if I am, but I'm not aware of any else of office locally where people are promising to keep citizens safe by whatever means necessary, especially as it regards safety and the cost of personal property and religious liberty. In the name of safety, our state has told me which store I may enter, how I may move on the beach, and what to put on my face in public, when I may leave my home, whom I can visit, and where I can worship. This is how children are governed, children who have no sense of discernment. As free Americans, we have the sense that we are seeing this new normal, and it's more terrifying than any viral spread. Across the state, counties are standing up to this tyrannical overreach. Governor Newsom has made it clear that he expects to be obeyed, and yet he himself has defied the federal government for years with sanctuary cities. We as citizens need you to stand up for us. Let's follow Governor Newsom's example and declare our city a sanctuary city for businesses and nonprofits, including churches, that would choose to be open, so that responsible citizens' liberty can be restored. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hunter, if you could please state your name?
Hunter Cudillo. What a joke that our health officer couldn't carve this into his calendar an hour. I mean, are you kidding me? He's going to dictate to us how we live our lives, and if he can't show up, he needs, not to resign, you guys need to fire this guy today. It's ridiculous. People walking around muzzled in these masks on the brink of summer with flu season well over with. No one in our county hospitalized from this virus. An order like this has no place in a free society. It puts these businesses, their employees, in an awkward confrontational position, especially with people like myself who don't easily comply with tyranny. You guys have stated over and over again that you're going to defer to the state on everything, so you have no excuse to not take this mask order right now, today, and kick bum health officer out of town, run him out of town, disgrace. Next, I'd like to request that our supervisors put on the agenda for next week, a discussion and a vote to declare San Benito County a sanctuary county for businesses and churches. The City Council of Outwater on Friday voted to affirm the city's commitment to fundamental constitutional rights, and declared the city of Outwater a sanctuary city for all businesses. The sheriff of Merced County also wrote a great letter stating that his department will not enforce these unlawful orders going forward. Governor Newsom's actions have been well outside constitutional authority here, and I would argue that our local officials who are holding his decrees are also in violation of the law. Your actions, or rather, inaction, is criminal. The pesky constitution strongly suggests you read it today, along with the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights. You don't have to be a lawyer to understand that the contracts clause of the Constitution prohibits the states from interfering with lawful contracts such as leases and employment agreements. The due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment prohibits the states from interfering with life, liberty, or property without a trial at which the state must prove fault. The takings clause of the Fifth Amendment requires just compensation when the state meaningfully interferes with an owner's chosen lawful use of his property. The protection in the First Amendment of the right to associate in freedom of religion, it's clear as day these orders are in violation. Why is it so hard for some of you to understand? I'm just going to say it traitorous. I want to appeal especially to Supervisor Gilio to please join with Supervisor Hernandez and call the sanctuary county status to be in the agenda for next week and be forced to vote. Force these other supervisors to vote against the Constitution and make their criminality clearly known and on the record. You can be 100% certain, even with the, the even that happens throughout the summer with this lockdown, they're going to try and lock this down again in the fall, and this time with a vaccine. We need this sanctuary status as a protection for our businesses and churches in the future. End the mask order, declare us a sanctuary county, and kick this bum health officer out of town.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Courtney, if you could please state your name?
Good morning. My name is Courtney Evans, and I'm with Kamal Yoga Studio. Over 230 years ago, Benjamin Franklin said, "Our rights and liberties are not to be taken for granted." Our traditions of free speech and due process cannot survive without individuals that are willing to defend them. I will stand to be free to have open, civil, and respectful discourse. Mr. Patello, you stated that these workshops are all successful, that the presenters have been informative. No important questions have ever been answered. Everything has just been deferred to the governor. Tracy Belton's job is a program manager. She's an employee of the governor. Why can't she answer these questions for our people? Why can't she answer these questions for our people? You have invited people to these meetings, to these workshops, to these educational, these educational meetings that you have every week, absent of this doctor who's ordering us around. You are inviting people into your indoctrination that you're taking apart of. Last week at Real Vineyards, the public health department harassed them, told them that I was not allowed to teach classes, that the yoga lady is voicing a lot and making issues for the county and our public health office. I demand that we, the people, take our city-county freedoms back. We should be a sanctuary city. Who's going to take the liability for all the suicides, for all the bacterial infections, for the mental state of the community? Tracy Belton, will you take that liability? Board of Supervisors, will you take that liability? The doctor that is absent, will you take the liability and the total health of people in your arms and be responsible for that? Last year, my business won the Health and Wellness Business of the Year. I was recognized at the congressional level. The WHO defines health and wellness not merely the absence of disease or infirmity, but the state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being. Wellness incorporates the power of choice, meaning an individual has the ability to take action towards optimal health. My business provides that. You, Spurs, you, Tracy Belton, you, doctor that's making decisions, is going to prove in court a law that my business is not essential, that I do not care of the life, the well-being of my community, my family, and myself. I am ashamed that you are the representatives of our people. I look forward to the next election. I look forward to banding our community together and holding everyone responsible for making these decisions, intimidating, bullying, and shaming people that question.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Crystal Holland, a resident of Hollister. So, in one week of mass testing, our positivity rate has decreased by, I believe, almost 50% in just one week. Now, can we think shelter-in-place? But the reality is, from what I'm seeing, people are still gathering. People are seeing their families. People are out without masks. And still, our number is staggered very low. This has been going on for weeks, and there's no drastic increase. Those who are using masks are not using them properly. As I've seen restaurants with a name that I've been to for pickup, workers in the back with masks hanging off their face because they can't breathe or work in them, touching them and constantly adjusting them, increasing risk and not decreasing risk. We have a local leader putting out updates that are bashing those who don't wear them without proper proof of their efficiency, causing further dividing of our people. Lastly, our children are being impacted drastically. My own daughter simply wants to swing. That's all she wants, to go to the park and swing, at a park that never has more than a few people at a time anyways. She's a preteen whose happy place is a swing with her music, and that's now considered, what, illegal? She has been attacked while riding her bike because she was on the sidewalk, and someone started yelling at her six feet. She's a kid who's being attacked because of riding on a sidewalk, which I have taught her because, for her own safety. Now, the fear our leaders are chasing in our people, have them attacking our children, and it's not okay. People who are, can't wear masks for medical or just comfort reasons are now being segregated and told that they cannot go into certain establishments, like getting the necessities that they need to live. And that's not okay either. There's not enough proof for these masks that say that we should have to wear them. I agree that if people want to wear them, let them, but we should not be forced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jackie, if you could please state your name.
Jackie, if you could unmute yourself. This is Jackie Morris. Good morning, supervisors and chair. I just want to bring it back to reality of what we're discussing. And just a brief comment, I fully and absolutely disagree with the previous speakers that are charging you with violating our constitutional rights. I 100% disagree with that comment. My question is maybe, I think part of the hysteria I'm seeing and hearing is not understanding scientific terms like pandemic, novel viruses. Basically, a pandemic is worldwide infection, global infection, which includes our continent, North America. Novel virus means that we've never seen anything quite like it. We can make assumptions based on flu, influenza, or other viruses that we have had, but this is a new, unique virus. So every day, every week that ticks, is adding more tools in our toolbox, how we can prevent and fight this. I find that wearing a mask is reasonable. I don't feel like it's cutting on my personal rights or constitutional rights. As a healthcare provider, I feel it's the least that we can do to protect you from me and me from you. I feel, one of the things that I feel that is a little bit uncalming is that Ms. Belton, and I know she's doing a great job, the whole Department of Public Health is doing a great job, they're structuring it in. We are a small county, but a very, large, growing, and fast-growing county, which stresses our infrastructure and right now the public health department. She mentioned about self-certifying for the businesses. I, as the consumer and a healthcare provider, find that a little bit nervy. I'm wondering if there are any ways that they could be a little bit more oversight for that. Someone asked about wearing masks in restaurants. Obviously, you're not going to wear a mask and be able to eat your food, but I would think because you're in a small confined area, even though there might be some changes in how far the distance of tables are being set apart or people allowed in restaurants at one time, I feel that masks should be used until your food is served, just going along with the premise that masks are the only way that we can prevent and protect each other. I'm going to speak to the gentleman, Mr. Hunter Cuno, that was so loudly and boldly disrespecting your offices and what you're trying to achieve. I feel like this is a very trying time, and I feel that you have a different opinion, but I feel that ultimately, you're all coming together for the health and welfare of our communities. I don't disagree, and I really think it's very disrespectful that he is plotting you to fire our current health officer, as do our previous one, Jody, and I feel that...
Jackie, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Waller, if you could please state your name.
Yes, my name is Mike Waller. So after weeks of listening to the rants from both sides of the deck, I've decided to chime in. The fact is, we are all in uncharted waters right now. I don't believe that any of the elected officials here today ever thought their position would require these kind of actions. The unfortunate truth is that, well, this stuff is here, and here we are. How we proceed now is who we will be going forward. We live in one of the best places on earth, San Bernito County. I have two children, one a junior, the other about to graduate eighth grade. We originally followed the advice from our leaders. We showed up in plates, stocked up our freezers, schooled, and worked from home. We have parents and grandparents who we love and want to protect. Life was actually great, much needed time to reflect away from our busy schedules. We created routines to keep on track. In my mind, this is what my family life was about. But after one month of social distancing, we started to see psychological effects of keeping our children away from their peers. Children need to be children. Our schools, sports, family gatherings, parties, and social life has so much to do with who we are and who we become. Hearing yesterday that there are three possible scenarios for high school restarting next year has prompted me to speak up. Yes, there is a virus. The true virus is about to unfold if we see iron on our hands. People who are prone or scared have all the shelter-in-place, and I, as a citizen, son, grandson, will respect that. But that, but the well-being of our children is at stake. It is time, we as a small community, make the splash. You elected officials can turn this unfortunate situation into something of grandeur. We can change the course of this made-up Hollywood script. Laws and regulations are now completely disregarded. You have the chance to put San Bernito County on the map. If we, as a county, take matters in our own hands and write our own rules, we can make a change that can make waves in California, United States, and the rest of the world. I will host parties all summer long with bands, food, hugging, handshaking. We are humans who react to compassion. We cannot give that away. I am not scared, but continue to respect those who are. I have so many like minds in my camp that I'm afraid, if you don't take the stand, we will completely trample the ones who are afraid to do so. Let the kids be kids. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle, if you could please state your name.
Emmy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Michelle Perry, and I'm a hairstylist here in town, and I totally agree with the majority of the people that are speaking right now. I feel like what we're doing is we are causing so much fear in people that people are taking on a whole new virus of their own because of the fear. There, this doesn't need to be this much fear. Yes, we have a virus, okay? It's in our, it's in our society. It's not going to go away. This is the way it is. It's going to fear for the rest of our lives. So do we live ourselves in the bubble and not, and not deal with it? I mean, I agree with the last caller, the children are going to be devastated, they're going to live in a world that they don't even know, that they don't understand, they don't experience. I, I am a hairstylist, so yes, I have to comply with what the state does as far, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for other stylists, so don't get me wrong. I'm speaking for myself. When I, when I took my state license almost 40 years ago in Oregon, I had to take 2,300 hours, and 100% of that is intertwined into every single thing that I do as a hairstylist. A lot of people feel more safe in a salon than they do in a grocery store or a gas station, but yet these places, because they're considered necessity, are able to be open. The thing is, I have to comply with the rules of what they say or I'll lose my license. But it doesn't mean I have to agree with it. And, and when I, when I say people are going to be scared half to death, I watch the kids walking around with little masks on their face. It makes me cry. It's ridiculous, and, and I just can't believe our city cannot go sanctuary. It doesn't make sense to me. That's it.
Thank you.
Adina, if you could please state your name.
Hi, my name is Adiana, and I am a resident of San Bernito County. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, this is Adiana, I'm a resident of San Bernito County. I'd first like to say, amen, David, Jessa, Hunter, and Courtney, and all the rest of you that are expressing your hearts out there. You're awesome, and it's great to hear your voices. I support removing this mandatory mask order today. I also support declaring San Bernito County a sanctuary county, with all businesses being essential. We know this can be done because other cities and counties and states and law enforcement agencies are doing it. I'd like to talk a little bit about the mask order. The mask order was recommended until April 24th, and then it became mandatory on April 27th, at the end of flu season. Kind of odd, all of a sudden, it had to become mandatory. We know that this order is ridiculous, and we know this because there are 50 states in America, and only seven of these states have mandatory statewide mask orders. Connecticut, Maryland, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and oddly Hawaii, but most of those are East Coast states. Ohio tried to implement a statewide mask order on Tuesday and had to rescind it on Wednesday because the people rejected it. This begs the question, if California does not have a mandatory statewide mask order, why does San Bernito County? Why are we stricter than the California mandate? Why are we stricter than 42 other states? We are not New York, Chicago, and we're in LA. We've already heard all the arguments for the mask and the big doctor, and getting a little bit tired of the leftist progressive lecturing us on morality and the science, which is hotly contested by other scientists. We're not ignorant, we're not the stupid rudes that need to be told what to do. We have done our research. In the face of losing everything, that's what we do. We do our research. And I think now it's time for our leadership to recognize the goodness of the people of this community. These are good people, these are smart people, they will do the right things. If people want to wear a mask, great. If people don't want to wear a mask, great. And all businesses should be open. If grocery stores can be open and have been open this whole time, there's no reason why other businesses can't be open, and people need to be allowed to do what they need to do, to make their customers happy, and to make their fellow citizens happy. They cannot be forced to do things, and they cannot be given their rights back in phases. So please get that on the agenda for next week to become a sanctuary city and county.
Thank you.
And please get that mask...
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Adam, if you could please state your name.
Hi, Adam Neney, resident of Hollister. I just want, I think everyone is increasingly aware that this is just arbitrary. A lot of this, of the decisions coming from Sacramento are totally arbitrary, not scientific. You know, we have, Governor Newsom says, "Oh, it's going to be months before we can do this." He gets pushback, and then all of a sudden, "Oh, now we're moving into stage 2A of phase 2B." I mean, it's ridiculous. Everyone, everyone is seeing that now. And, you know, with certain stores can be open, you can't go to church, but you can go to the grocery store, you can go to Walmart, you can go to Home Depot. It's ridiculous, and people know it. I think, and what a lot of people are saying, and you can tell by what people are saying, is that especially this mask order is destroying social cohesion in our community. You have people walking around scared to make eye contact with each other, like you're a ticking time bomb, you're going to blow up, and, you know, all of a sudden, your whole family's going to die if someone gets near you. It's ridiculous. You, that's the, I think the destruction of social cohesion in our community is, is a huge factor. You, you, you have neighbors snitching on people, you have kids at the arc plane catch getting harassed by the police. You know, I've seen cops posted out in front of churches on Sunday, okay? While criminals are being released on zero bail. It's, it's backwards. It's, it's insane. We got this, this mask order, make it a recommendation, if people want to wear it, they'll wear it. But it, the order is ridiculous and encouraging. It is, it's night, it's encouraging to see that a lot of businesses are not enforcing it. They're, they're, as time goes on, they're realizing what they're doing to their customers is ridiculous. So, that is, that is encouraging to see stores just ignoring it at this point, and it's going to continue that way. We've got to get rid of this order. As previous speakers have said, California's not requiring it. Why are we, why are we... I think, and one other point is just, I think that what people have been saying about sanctuary county for businesses and churches is a great idea, and I would encourage the board of supervisors to look into that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jessica, if you could please state your name.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, me, San Bernito County. I just wanted to say all the previous speakers have just been so inspiring. My comments are, I have some serious concerns with the current shelter-in-place regulations. Following Governor Newsom's orders seems fearful of contradictions and over control of government. For one, the restriction to wear mouth covering is causing serious division and harm to some individuals. My elderly neighbor who cannot wear a mask was harassed for several minutes by an elderly man who followed her throughout Safeway. She has literally avoided all shopping for this reason, as I have also avoided shopping. I've gone to the store three times since the shelter-in-place... I've gone to the store three times since the shelter in place has pulled out. People are clearly being discriminated against and harassed. We are dividing our residents instead of uniting. And there is clear evidence that the small droplets pass through the face of the covering. Lastly, wearing masks can cause health issues in and of themselves. Wearing facial covering should be optional. There are too many contradictions that don't make any sense. And people who literally can't wear them are afraid of being harassed in public, which is unacceptable. In the past, doctors used to prescribe the fresh air and sunshine and going to the beach to maintain health and strong immune system. The current health regulations contradict, contradict maintaining a healthy immune system. A local Hollister resident playing catch with their child at Veterans Morale Park was threatened with a misdemeanor by local law enforcement if they didn't leave the park. Is this what we want for our community? People being threatened by local law enforcement for playing with their children in a park? Does this sound like a cerebral puke? No, it doesn't. It's super scary what's going on. Also, as many of you know, our residents are suffering financially, mentally, and physically. Our elderly are alone. I see my elderly neighbor across the street who lost his wife last year alone every single day. His family does not visit him anymore. People need to work to support themselves, their families, and to maintain social health. We cannot keep depending on government bailout bills that are funded through taxpayers' money. People need to get back to work. We need to reopen our counties. Our hospitals are super slow and our doctors are stating that this virus appeared several months before anyone knew it was here and life proceeded as normal. We are past the peak of the curve. What kind of precedent does this set for future health, public concerns like the flu virus? Lastly, it's clear that these regulations are against our constitutional rights and liberties that this country is founded on. All businesses are essential and our churches need to be open. The fact that churches are still closed, but tennis courts and golf courses are open is yet another contradiction. Our churches need to be reopened immediately. I ask the board of supervisors to listen to the facts, listen to your citizens, and follow the Constitution. Please make wearing a mask optional to stop the harassment and discrimination in our communities. Please reopen our county and set an example for others. Thank you for your time and God bless you while in this difficult situation that you are in.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Frank, if you could please state your name.
Yeah, this is Frank Barrigan, resident of San Bernito County. Um, you know, I appreciate, um, Hunter and many of the other individuals out there speaking on behalf of the businesses. But today, I'm going to focus on the mask ordinance that we have here in San Bernito County. And, um, and the reason why I, I'm talking about this is myself has been harassed by individuals here in San Bernito County, Monterey County. Um, Santa Clara County is the only county that hasn't harassed me, so there's where I continue to go to the stores. But the reason why I'm going to the store and not using a mask is the real story here. Um, my family, um, via genetics, have issues with asthma. And when the allergy season starts, which for us, it's April and May, for me, I know it's May, um, we tend to have respiratory issues. And I've already had two episodes in the last week, in the last two weeks. I had two episodes of CO2 poisoning because I cannot get enough oxygen in my lungs because of wearing a mask. So I know here in our county, it's not mandated if you have a disability, but the stores don't know that. And by you keeping these ordinance on the books, you're causing people like myself and my whole entire family from being able to go to the stores to buy food and not be afraid of being disrespected by individuals who think you have to be wearing a mask. I keep my six feet apart from people. I go to the stores without a mask, but every time I have to worry about someone telling me something. That is not very, that's not right at all. And this county is, is blowing steam into that issue. And we really need to make sure that the individual store owners understand that there can be an issue. And we know this county also is trying to attract businesses into our county. But when you make regulations and restrictions that hamper people's ability to do business, it's going to affect us down the road. Not today, but down the road when we're trying to attract businesses. When we have restrictions in our books, they're going to look at what we did during COVID-19, shutting down businesses, putting restrictions on businesses to, to become profitable. I've talked to business owners here in, in San Bernito County who are in downtown, who cannot open a restaurant dining because it would be economically unfeasible for them to open up. It's just, it's, what we have here in our county is just, I, I don't believe it's conducive to anyone's business. Uh, the mask ordinance is horrible. Um, and I'm speaking for myself and my family and anyone else that has the same issue with allergies and, and asthma.
Thank you, Frank.
Bailey, if you could please state your name.
Hi, um, I'm Bailey Evans. I am a resident of San Bernito County. I just wanted to talk real quick, um, about first the max, the mask order. I think that should be lifted immediately. Not only I, but a lot of people I know struggle from anxiety and panic attacks. And every single time I have to wear those, I find myself, um, uh, being induced into one of those attacks. And it's just not, it's just not possible for me to wear those all the time, especially when I have to go to the store for my, um, big family, you know? I'm, I'm at least in there for an hour, so it's really hard to wear a mask. I also, um, just want to talk about the mental health of not only people in San Bernito County, but everywhere in the United States. The suicide rates have skyrocketed. The suicide hotlines have also skyrocketed. This is a really difficult time for these people, having to stay inside, not be around family members, not be able to go to places like the beach or the park. It's, it's just not right to keep people in their house all the time, especially these people who do deal with mental illnesses like myself. I found it very, very hard to just stay inside all the time. And every time I go out without a mask, I am looked at, I'm yelled at, I am scoffed at. It's just ridiculous, the amount of people who are judgmental towards me, but they have no idea that I have to deal with something every day. Um, I also do want to talk about how domestic abuse and child abuse has skyrocketed. That is something that no one's really talking about. And I think it is, it's very ignorant to just totally disregard this side of the spectrum on this situation because they have to deal with this all the time. And now this is their new reality for however long this stay at home, um, is in effect. So I think we should really think about the choices we make from here out, just to think about everyone as a whole. Um, I also will be voting and it will matter. I think that the board supervisors needs to really listen to what everyone is saying and just give their full attention to the people's words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rob, if you could please state your name. If you could please unmute yourself, Rob.
Hi, sorry. Can you hear Rob Bernoski?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, uh, first of all, again, so first of all, I, uh, again want to, um...
We lost him. If you could please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Crystal Holland. I just had one last thing I wanted to share real quick, if that's possible. Um, I wanted to share a, so one of the first studies on cloth masks.
She really spoke?
And the results cautious.
Dope, dope.
Mark, if you could please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Mark Rogers. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Uh, I've been a San Bernito County resident since nineteen seventy-two and I can go on and on about things that this county has done over the years. Um, guys are typically not pro-business, but we, we won't get into that right now. This is mainly over the, uh, the issue of masks and, and stand place orders. Uh, I'm a firm believer in opening the county immediately with no mask or restrictions. The sad thing is, most of you don't care whether we, the people, have something to say. Your mind may be made up already. I, I, I hope it's not. Uh, uh, so perhaps you guys may be open to governing the people by suggestion and not by dictating how we live our day-to-day lives. Those that want to do whatever they feel is necessary to be safe, so be it. Let them do what they need to do, just like I protect my mother and my friends that are older, uh, just like during flu season. I mean, we all, nobody wants to get sick. Nobody wants to be ill, no matter what it is. Uh, this new virus going out, it's killing people, but look at the global numbers. They, they don't make sense. The, the flu itself, influenza, CDC numbers, uh, it's high as seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand globally die a year because of influenza. So you guys need to consider the, the, the global effect of this is minimal. And there are so many third world countries that don't have the ability to do what America has done. And yet the numbers aren't skyrocketing. But you guys are going to believe what you're going to believe. To mandate all the residents to do these things is unlawful. Unfortunately, lawsuits usually are what make people change their minds. But I can go on and on about the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. You guys either know that or you ignore it. Stand up, be the leaders we need you to be, especially in this time, and declare San Bernito County a sanctuary city. Do the suggestions that are needed and let the people govern their life as God intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Aliyah, if you could please state your name.
Um, Aliyah Salinas, thank you for allowing me to speak. First of all, I want to say kudos to the board of supervisors for following state law, state regulations and going with sheltered in place, uh, having to wear the masks. I, I, I'm astounded by, I didn't realize that San Bernito County was so populated with so many constitutional attorneys out there that have been able to come out forward and speak to you guys on behalf and teach you what the Constitution is all about. However, our forefathers, when the Constitution was written, it states quarantine because they knew quarantine existed because of pandemics. We go into a quarantine. We went into a sheltered in place. The numbers are down because it worked. It's, the virus is still out there. This virus is not a Democrat and it is not a Republican. And I'm offended by someone saying that the people on the left are issuing, you know, are going on this thing that, that, that that's why you guys are making this decision. First of all, maybe the public doesn't know, but you all are aware. When you sit up there, you're impartial, you're nonpartisan, and you're making a decision based on the welfare of the entire community, based on scientific facts, data. These people that are speaking today are very loud and they are, they are, have every single right to come and speak on their behalf. But Supervisor Hernandez, I am in your district. You do not speak for me, sir. I am one of your constituents and I am in favor of the sheltered in place and I am still saying that we need to wear the masks. People must be educated. People must, there are, there are farm workers out there right now that are fearful of getting tested because it's being offered by the government. We need to work together to get farm workers to get tested because that is the majority of the people right now that are getting, that are coming back with the coronavirus test positive are in Monterey County, are farm workers. They're working in our county as well and we need to reach out to them. I want to express, um, the fact that, uh, the police did not harass any people last week. Those individuals made a choice to jump over a fence of a closed park with big red signs that said, "Park is closed." If you're going to raise your children to follow the laws and to say that they can make the best decisions for themselves, then that is not a good example right now. The example starts at home, to obey the laws. You don't allow your kids to run across the street. You do not allow your children to break the law. And I want to...
Thank you. Thank you, Aliyah. Next speaker, Card.
Emily, if you could please state your name.
Hi, my name is Emily Scow. Uh, I was born and raised in San Bernito County since nineteen seventy-nine. Our family settled here in eighteen eighties. Our family has always been very active in this community and supported local businesses for over a hundred years. I am here today to make my voice heard, to go on the record and say that I don't agree. I don't comply with this mask order. There is no state of emergency and this is unlawful. Um, the masks that we wear are not enough to help. Recommendations say to wash your hands, sanitize equipment, cough needs into your arms, to wear a N95 mask. Very few have access to an N95 mask and masks should not be touched or adjusted once that they are on. Everyone in this meeting has adjusted their mask. Um, so you guys can basically take them off because they are no longer effective. Why or when was this mask required? April twenty-seventh. How many cases did we have at that time? Uh, I believe two or three active cases. Why if masks are so important to wear, then why do we not wear them at restaurants, but we have to wear them to stores? Why did we not wear masks in November and December when so many people in Hollister were sick? School attendance was down at that time about thirty percent with sick kids. I hope that our board of supervisors ask these questions, that you all dig deep and do what you're being, and not just do what you're being told by the state. If we don't speak up now and know that our rights have already been taken away so much, um, what is next? Are we going to allow trackers and tracers into our homes and remove the infected from their families? Are we going to just line up with our arms out and take a vaccine and put who knows what into our bodies? Gavin Newsom was against vaccines for so long. Now all of a sudden, he's on the vaccine train. Um, thank you, Hernandez, for speaking up. I think that's what's needed. Uh, thank you, Courtney Hunter and Veronica for also speaking up. Uh, the last thing I do want to say is that I love when kids see things in black and white. I was with my daughter the other day. She's eight years old. We were driving past Target and this was her first time out in town for quite a while. She yelled, "Wow, mom, look at all the people with masks on. Are they sick? Why are they lined up? Are they lined up to get medicine?" And I told her, "No, they're not sick." And she asked, "Then why are they out there wearing masks?" And I told her, "I don't know. I can't even answer it because I am just, I, I don't know. Why are we wearing masks when our numbers are not showing that we need to?" So again, thank you, guys, and I believe we do need to declare this a sanctuary city. This is what we need to do and I'll stand by anyone who agrees with that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Glenn, if you could please state your name.
Yeah, hi, this is Glenn Pacheco, a twenty-year resident of San Bernito. And, um, I, like Mike Waller, have kind of sat on the sidelines and listened to these board of supervisor meetings for the last couple of weeks. And at this point, uh, my frustration level with this whole entire thing has reached the point where I'm speaking out, which is not, not necessarily in my personality. Let me start by saying, I think this is going to be one of the biggest travesties in United States history when it's all said and done. The numbers of deaths a, a, associated with this do not equal the fact that we're shutting down our economy. Businesses aren't going to come back. Some businesses don't have savings to, to last months at a time without opening. Now that being said, I think all businesses in San Bernito County should open immediately, including gyms, churches, salons. They're all essential. Who is the government to say, well, a business that is putting food on the table for their families is not essential? Last time I checked, we, we still live in the United States. This isn't right. This isn't right. I think the mask org, mask org ordinance should be lifted as well. It should, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, then you shouldn't have to. This is America, once again. And I also like what Mike said, and kind of most important on my point, is what this is doing to our kids. First off, we can't continue, my wife is an educator, by, by the way, we cannot continue with this social distance learning. It's not good enough. We're gonna have long-term effects from our kids if this goes on any longer. The kids need to go back to school next year, full classrooms, full ability with sports. Now that being said, I think all parks should be opened immediately, not just Bellato, but Memorial Park, and all the parks across the county. Summer's coming up, the kids aren't even gonna have any social distancing to do at all. Do you expect the kids in this county to stay home every day? They should have the ability to go to the park and play catch with the football, or baseball, or soccer, or whatever else they please. What else would you rather them do? So, uh, yeah, um, what else? So last, last but not least, I agree with, with someone else. I personally just do not, I refuse to live my life in fear. I don't think this is justified, and I think we need a full opening of San Benito County immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jared, if you could please state your name.
Yeah, hi there. My name's Jared Gallagher. I'm a resident of San Benito County. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Fantastic. Outside of all of things that have been represented here, I wanted to call in. I work in Santa Clara County and live in San Benito, and these are two very different worlds, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things that a company here by the name of Apple is doing to lead us through this. They are choosing to, instead of abide by the order, they're making their own, and they're leading, knowing that our political system and bureaucracy is just a juggernaut of wasted time and resources. They're doing it on their own. So our largest corporation is looking upon themselves to decide that the government is inept and they're going to do it themselves. And our county, San Benito County, should do the same. If a company can, so, so can a county. Tesla did it, Apple's doing it, it's coming. You guys need to free our county. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rob, if you could please state your name.
Rob Bernoski. Rob Bernoski?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me this time?
We can hear you.
All right. All right, I don't know if I got cut off before, so I'm just gonna start off from the beginning, and always stating my appreciation for the Board of Supervisors listening to what we have to say. However, that said, the one thing that is bugging me is, why are public officials, and this is not just you, but it just seems in general, not addressing the economic impacts and the constitutional rights issues? The conversation we are all having here today is simply intellectually not satisfying because those concerned about the economic impact, and those concerned about constitutional rights and accompanying liberties are not being addressed by you. This is overall, and it includes, again, all government officials. Many in the public are attempting to shame us because we are concerned about those things. Please do whatever's necessary to address those issues in a respectful manner, and let's have the non-angry conversation, but the intellectually satisfying one. Imagine the people that are literally scared to death to test exercising their constitutional rights and liberties right now, with the risk of losing their livelihoods on the line. We test speed limits and other things like that all the time, but the penalty isn't losing our life or our livelihoods, and how we support our families. And I'm just here to say, it's not fair. It's too heavy-handed. Please consider having a special meeting just to discuss these issues. Let's have an intelligent, intellectually satisfying conversation about it, because everybody just, us just talking about these things and not getting a response from you other than, "We're all going to die," doesn't make sense. So please, help us to, to test the exercise of our constitutional rights. Please have that meeting. Let's have the back and forth and hear what you guys have to say about these things. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Rob. Next speaker.
We have no more. If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring you back to the board. This is more information and presentation. Any final thoughts from the board before we move on to 21?
Yeah, I think we probably all should have some final thoughts when we have, I don't know how many speakers we had, but-
Supervisor Patel.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. We probably had, I don't know how many speakers we had, but quite a number, and we haven't had too many issues that had a greater number of public comments, so I, I think the public deserves to hear some of the thoughts that we have as supervisors. And, you know, don't think for a minute that we don't have these conversations every day, all day, with our constituents, with ourselves, our staff. We go home on the weekends at night and have these conversations with our family and friends. None of us are sitting here in this room, I think, enjoying, wearing a mask. But we feel there's an obligation to try to protect ourselves and protect others from, you know, infection. And I, I know there's comments that question the science, but I've seen a lot of science the other way, that during this period of time, we, we, this is the highest level of protection. This is an order by our public health officer, and the previous public health officer had the same order for the benefit of this, you know, our public, San Benito County. And I, I think our success in the lower infection rate, that we've been able to move forward in Phase 2B of the governor's plan to reopen, is because we've been successful. We sheltered at home, we've been wearing our face masks, we've been keeping social distance, we've been washing our hands, and this needs to continue for a little bit longer. We're just asking for some patience. I think the ability for us to test and test a lot of people, over 100 a day at, at the Vets Building, I, I don't know how many they test at Hazel Hawkins, is going to give the assurance to our health officer at some point in time that modifications can be made. You know, myself, I probably won't be losing this stupid mask for a while because I'm, you know, I have a little higher risk, but, and I'm gonna keep it when I go out in public. And that's gonna be my business. I think everybody has an obligation to be educated on this virus, as far as the best protections of themselves and their families, and, and those around them. And that's what it's gonna come down to eventually. We're, we're going, this disease is a bee in our environment for, for a period of time. And, you know, you're, you're not gonna, you know, things are be modified. I think most of our businesses can open in our county right now, with a handful of just some exceptions. And I, I really do believe that the vast majority of our public expects us to take actions that provide for the public good and the public health. And that's, that's what these orders are, are, are meant for. We have to follow the state law. We're not, you know, I'm not a support being a sanctuary county. I, I, I believe in law and order, and, and that's where I'm gonna be at. You know, I, I feel sorry, you know, some people do have medical conditions. There's exceptions in the mask order for, for those conditions. And, and people need to understand and be courteous for those who aren't able to wear a mask, but I'm gonna support the direction that we're going in. We hear the concerns loud and clear. We're continuing to do what we can to support businesses to open. We're committed to that, and that's basically my comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Patel, Supervisor Medina. Supervisor Kilio?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's say a few words. The, the bottom line is, is, and I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of the spokes that actually spoke today, and I have also, just in, in my district alone, I represent over, over 10,000 people. The, the five of us up here represent about 62,000 individuals across our county. And what I can tell you, you know, I'm gonna speak, I'm not gonna use the royal "we," I'm gonna use "I," and the reason I'm using "I" is because you guys want to know my opinions. This board has been criticized for not listening to the public. I can tell you, I do everything I can possibly do to listen to the public, who have phone calls, to have meetings, to talk, to now on Zoom. I do that pretty much almost every day. Not almost every day, I do it every day, to be frank with you. And, you know, my, my history, if some of you guys don't know, as a police officer, I retired as a police captain with the city of Gilroy after 15 years of service. I got hurt and I couldn't do that job anymore. So I definitely understand law and order. I understand having to perhaps enforce laws that you don't agree with. Proposition 47, Proposition 57, AB 109, you name them. Those things changed police work in my mind in a way that, you know, we won't recover from for quite some time. We have, we have an obligation, obligation to do that and follow, follow the laws of the county, the state, and I gotta tell you, I'll be the first one to, to, to agree with the folks that speak today. If any court in California, whether it's the Ninth Circuit, whether it's the U.S. Supreme Court, say that there's any violation of constitutional rights, you'll, yeah, of course. But I can tell you this, I've never led through a pandemic. I don't know anybody who has led through a pandemic. And what I'm doing is the best that I can do to listen to our community. Believe it or not, the, you don't hear a lot because folks are maybe intimidated to speak, but a lot of people agree with having a mask order. A lot of people agree with safely reopening businesses and not just opening everything wide open, and a lot of people don't, obviously. There's, there's, there's two sides to this, but I, I hear both sides every day. What I'm doing is I'm using safety, facts, advice from medical experts to support my thoughts and decision-making. I read every day articles and articles and articles, which is strange because there seems to be two sides to this thing, right? There seems to be a political divide, and if you're on one side, you believe this, and if you're on another side, you believe this. So I try to, I try to read everything I can read to support both sides, and also just journals about facts. And the people that spoke about higher suicide rates, that's a fact. That's not a, that's not a, an assumption. You can go to the American Medical Association and read documents on it. They, they believe that not only is the suicide rate going up, but it will continue to go up, even though it was already going up in 1819, but it's likely gonna spike because of COVID. That, those are things that I see as a fact, because you can look at a number, and you can say, "Okay, during this period last year, we had X amount, and this period we have X amount." So those are facts. And I'll continue to rely on confirmed reliable medical expert giving advice from our health officer, Dr. Marty. I supported him, to be clear, in the past. He was a renowned health expert who had the time to give us. What we heard today is, I, I, I'm very disappointed that our health officer wasn't here either, but that's what we have right now. We have, we only have that health officer. We're, unfortunately, lost our last health officer, and we had to get one quickly because the, what I've been told, and I haven't confirmed this, but I've been told, the, the alternative is if you don't have a health officer, the state will assign you a health officer. You can't just not have a health officer. That's not the way that, that we're set up. But I can look into that and confirm that as well. So I'm gonna continue to do that, I'm gonna continue to listen, and I really believe that we will get through this. I believe we are getting through this. I believe that San Benito County was one of the very first ones to implement the state's new, new laws and rules for 2B. And, and actually, you know, the national media has, has picked us out as a, as a, as a way forward, that we're doing good things and, and we're, we're being progressive and we're pushing back as hard as we can. I personally wrote a letter to the governor. I signed a letter on, all of us board members have signed, I believe it's going out today, if you guys have all signed it. And that's what I will continue to do to represent you guys, and thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I, I've heard it mentioned, and I, ultimately, there's two sides. But what's funny, because the more I think about that statement, I think about the reality that's being painted, and then the reality that people are living. It seems like, to a certain extent, they're a clash right now. It's hard to ignore that. I mean, we, we, the, the initial sentiment, according to the science, right, the data that was, that was driving this conversation was, we needed to flatten the curve. We did that. Now that's not good enough. Then we said, "Hey, we need to make sure our surge capacity is addressed." We did that. Now that's not good enough. Then we said, "Oh, we need to have an ability to basically test people and, and minimize the, the, the," ultimately, from the test time to the, to the time that we find out what the, the, the positive or negative cases. We've done that. So we've done all this, and it seems like, you know, that's just my, with all due respect to the board, it really is, it just, there's, there's too many contradictions that doesn't allow me to support what, what the sentiment of the board is here. I know previously, we've done a lot of good work on things. I feel like that's gonna be hindered by default, not because so much of the, our difference in our opinion, it's because we're, we're basically shutting down our economy. We're not even allowing things to happen. The implications of the things are already creating a lot of issues. We're getting emails every day. You know, I just saw yesterday, and I read an article in Cal Matters, where it talks about the, the state's basically in a huge deficit, there's gonna be shutdowns, the hot, the school systems is gonna suffer greatly, the hospital system. There's gonna be a lot of issues by the very reasoning of the rationale of what we're hearing, is saying, "This is so good that it's gonna cause damage," as if that makes sense. So, you know, one of the things that I, has been constantly brought up that, that this board, I, I want to acknowledge, I feel like we haven't really focused on, is, is the constitutionality of things. And I know Supervisor Gil, with all due respect, you mentioned that you'd like to hear about court cases. I'll forward them to you. They're starting to pile up. I know that there was, there was, you know, a speaker that actually mentioned something about quarantining in the Constitution. And it's funny, because I, I knew of a case, again, me following it just the same, doing a whole lot of homework, is a judge, a federal ju, or a U.S. District Judge in Denver, actually granted a temporary restraining order for restrictions of church services, again, because the, the discrimination happening between essential and non-essential. And his quote, and it, this is again, speaking to the person that said the quarantine in the Constitution. The judge said, "There is no pandemic exception to the Constitution of the United States or the free exercise clause of the First Amendment." So this is his words, not mine. So if there was a quarantine somehow, I mean, I would prefer to speak specifically to the language in the Constitution, which I'd like to encourage. I think, I think to a certain extent, it's even timely for us to bring these kind of things up. So I wanted to read a portion of the Declaration of Independence, which is actually really consistent with the Constitution. It, the reason why, and for those that maybe, you know, were doing a little bit of my own homework, and I think this is intended, which is rightly so, it's we, the people, for everybody to read it, and every, to, everybody to understand. You don't have to be a lawyer, you don't have to be a, a judge to, to be smart enough. I, I don't, I discourage that mentality. I think it's an insult to the people. I believe they themselves are smart enough and are capable enough to, to develop that understanding, and ultimately to have a unity, which is what the intent of the Constitution is. But the Declaration sets the course, where it ultimately declares the, why they separated from Great Britain, and they give 20, he give, basically, in the Declaration of Independence, it clarifies, there's 27 grievances. Why are they grievances? Because it was basically violations that, that the King of Great Britain did, had over the people, over the colonies. So I'll read a little, a little portion of it, basically towards the end, when it mentions why. This is the why. "But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuably, pursuing invariably the same object, evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferances of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrain them to alter the former system of government. The history of the present king of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having a direct object to the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world." Powerful statement. So he's saying, "There's facts." What are the facts? He lays them out. The 27 grievances, I'll just mention two of them. One, for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. So what does that say? That basically, you had a king- That basically, you had a king writing up edicts. It sounds kind of familiar. And ultimately, he violates the individual rights of the people. And then there's another element where he says, "He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance." That sounds like heavy-handed legislation to me. Again, a little bit of a similarity with our current scenario. We're, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to speak to the facts of this situation. It's really, really frustrating when we hear all these evident, all these conversations relative to medical science, but then there's just the same. There's a whole lot of contradictions in that medical science. I've asked questions about recovery rate. I've asked questions on why the mortality rate is, is measured against now, which historically has always been. The mortality rate has been based off of total population. Somehow, now, we're actually focusing on mortality rate based off of illness or, or infection rate. That, that's historically never been done, and now it's all of a sudden happening, which makes a lot, draws a lot of questions. Again, it creates a division. And that's really the biggest context of what I've been trying to share is, you know, we, we have to basically be at a place, you know, Supervisor Batello mentioned, where we have unity. And I agree, we need to have law and order. But law and order are two that you can't separate. By default, law is not arbitrary. It's not intended to hurt the people that are, that are willful and respectful, that, that are engaging in trying to solve their own problems. The law is supposed to punish those that are committing crimes. And right now, the punishment is on the people that are basically the, the law-abiding citizens. And there's plenty of evidence that I, even in San Jose, where an officer basically argued, again, what, what's been heard before, is we're, we're releasing criminals, and we're saying, there's no, no bail for you folks. But then the people themselves, the, the, the good law-abiding citizens, the ones that want law and order, are the ones that we're punishing. So, there's just no substantive element to what we're doing, and we're not addressing constitutional rights. And again, what the judge said, not me, is constitutionality is not something you can just put under a rug and say, today, we're not going to, we're not going to use that as a mechanism. It's not going to apply. Constitutionally, up, constitutionality applies always. It never stops. The right of the people can never be abolished. That's what the Constitution says. Again, I didn't write those words. Never. Never is a permanent term to me. And, and I feel like we're ignoring that reality. We're not even talking about that reality. We're all swore to uphold it and defend the Constitution, but we don't talk about it. We don't even read it. It's a small book. It's like, what, maybe 30, 41 pages? 43 pages. Short. This is literally the law of the land. It's what our county council advises us on every day. Yet, we don't even listen to it. And we're ignoring everything else. So, I'm not here up to lecture anybody. I'm here to speak to facts. I definitely encourage us to, to, to alter and abolish our current forms of government that are not consistent with us as a board of supervisors, supporting the Constitution of the people. And if that means that we violate the state law, then, then I would agree with it. I would say that we should become a sanctuary county. And if I'm the only one to say it, that's fine. But at least let the, let the record be clear to a candid world, that that's where I stand, representing the people that I'm supposed to represent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Okay, now, we'll move on to item number 21. Barbara Thompson.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, on the last issue, I just wanted to reassure the board that we are tracking all the cases that are coming down, both in this, we're tracking the cases in California and also the cases that are happening in other places. So far, that there's been no court that's overturned or invalidated the state of California's order. There have been instances where it's been invalidated in other states. There have been multiple lawsuits that have been filed in California and in other states. The constitutionality of this will actually be determined by those court cases. And because California is more liberal than some of the other states in their courts, this actually may go up to the Supreme Court eventually, and that's where it's going to be ultimately decided, whether it's constitutional, because there is going to be a division likely between, there is already a division between the federal courts in different circuits. And so, the board, you know, has the ability and, to follow the order until it's determined that it's been illegal. But we will track it, because it's constantly evolving. And in addition to the court cases that are coming out every, every week, in addition, the governor is changing the order and changing the guidance in, 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 in certain ways. And I think that he will continue, perhaps, to change that order as the more court cases come down, to make it coincide with as guidance comes out. So, I'll just keep the board informed as there's important developments occurring.
Okay.
What, my, just some final comments, Mr. Chair. Just to, the ref, when I reference the Declaration of Independence, it's not to be separated from the federal Constitution, because the reality is the grievances were addressed in the federal Constitution. And I just wanted to, to make sure that, point of clarification, because ultimately, it gives respect to why these laws were written and how they were written, because of those very grievances. So, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are we done with that item? Yes? Okay, let's move on to number 21.
Okay, item number 21 is just presented to the board because the eviction and eviction ordinance that was approved by the board in March was due to expire on May 31st. There's actually been some developments. In addition to the executive order that was issued by the state of California, I believe it was 3720, it prohibited evictions, extended the time, I'm sorry, extended the time for 60 days to respond to summons based upon COVID-19-related events. That also is due to expire on May 31st. We have not seen the, the state of California extend that yet. There's still a possibility that they could take action before May 31st. But then again, they may not. In the interim, there was also an emergency rule, and that's in your packets, submitted by the Judicial Council. And that indicated that you may not issue summons for unlawful detainer, detainers, except for, as necessary for health and safety matters. And that's not due to expire until 90 days after the state of California emergency is lifted, the state of emergency. So, basically, the governor could allow the executive order to expire, but there would still be the Judicial Council provision that would say that you cannot issue summons on new unlawful detainer actions. That also has the various, various other provisions relating to cases that have already occurred. So, basically, it was our recommendation, as stated in the staff report, is to, that we don't believe that a local ordinance is necessary at this time, because there is no ability for a court to issue summons, except as necessary for health and safety emergencies. And so, therefore, I think that the state has adequately covered those grounds. But I wanted to present it to the board, because it is due to expire.
Okay. Supervisor Gilio.
Yeah, my thought is. Is let's keep tracking it and have county council track it. And if something changes at the state level where that's going to go away, maybe we can bring it back and deal with it. But having the conflicting orders doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Batello.
Yeah, I, I think we have to just follow what the state is, do with that issue. And, you know, hopefully, we don't have an order from the state or locally.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina.
Agree with Anthony and Jim.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hernandez.
No.
No what?
I mean, if, if we're talking, a, a local plan is literally that the intent and focus is for us to learn what it means to be responsive as, as our own community. Otherwise, what I'm hearing is we're always going to deflect to the state. Whatever the state says, we do. I think it, by default, puts us in positions as supervisors to really lose the value of why we even exist.
So, you, you rather support that we do something locally?
That we have our own plan.
Okay, well, that's why I'm pulling the board. I'm going to support Jim Gilio on this one, and you will be, I'll vote it, 4 to 1. We're going to monitor what the state's doing, and then report back to the board, Barbara.
A public comment?
A public comment.
I'm going to go to public comment right now. Okay, public comment?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand. Courtney, if you could please state your name.
I would also like to suggest that we keep track of not just the litigations that are coming against the state, but also to the county officials as well. Everyone has responsibility, that's why you're elected. But please pay attention to the little, small towns and the small voices all over this country.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hunter, if you could please state your name.
Yes, just the, Hunter Clunio, just to follow up with the previous lady was saying, that's, that's absurd to suggest that we wait, that, that the state can, that Newsom can install a dictatorship, and then we wait years down the road to see if it's constitutional or not. We don't need that. We, we have the document. We can see it's clear. This is unconstitutional, unlawful. And so, so that's, that's an absurd claim. And also Supervisor Gilio, I, I appealed to you earlier to, to join Supervisor Hernandez and call this to a vote, making us a sanctuary county.
Bears this on this topic?
And I was disappointed when you mentioned that.
This on this topic?
You're just going to follow the medical or the science, the, the medical experts, but that's, that's not really your, your job as a supervisor, is to.
Excuse me, sir, this has nothing to do with the item number 20.
The Constitution.
You want to mute him? It has nothing to do with the discussion at, at the table at the moment.
We have no more comments. If you, do you want to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand?
Another speaker, hearts? I'll wait about a couple of seconds more.
David, if you could please state your name.
David Patrick, I just want to follow up on the, I believe that's legal counsel that was speaking before. Why are we waiting for a, for a court to rule on the constitutionality of this? Like the previous speaker said, we have that document.
Excuse me, sir. This has, sir, this has nothing to do with the subject matter. This has to do about the eviction notice? Okay. Any other speaker?
We do not have any more.
Okay, let's wait a couple of seconds. None? Okay, we'll bring it back. And that's the direction of the board, is we're going to wait and follow, see what the state does, and then you'll address the board down the road.
Okay.
Good direction, Supervisor Gilio.
I believe that it was a 4-1 vote.
Yep.
Okay, with Supervisor Hernandez.
Osteating, correct.
The, no vote.
Yep.
Okay, item number 23.
Item 23.
Okay, so, as the board will recall, there was a master tax agreement that was done for residential annexations to the city of Hollister that pertain, just to residential annexations. As you know, you have to have a, a tax agreement pertaining to annexations, which decides how property tax will be split after the annexation is completed to the city of Hollister. If you do not have that in place, the annexation cannot occur. The annexation agreement that we did in December of 2019 only applied to residential. It did not apply to commercial. There's now pending a new commercial project that was approved by the city council to proceed to LAFCO at the end of 2019, but it still has not gone to LAFCO, and it will need a commercial tax agreement. It does not have to be a master tax agreement for commercial. It could be a project-specific agreement for commercial. But there does need to be a commercial tax agreement with the city of Hollister in order for that annexation to proceed to the LAFCO. There was a couple of different manners that we could negotiate that with the city. The board could appoint an ad hoc, staff could negotiate it. At this point in time, we would suggest that staff negotiate the terms with the city manager, with the staff of the city, and bring that back to the board for, for, for action. But I will defer to the, for the board for direction.
Okay. Does the board wish to have a, have staff negotiate or have, not have, committee? Anthony?
I kind of think, at this point in time, we should just let staff deal with it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, I'd like to see staff take a, a crack at it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark?
Staff, please.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, as long as we get, you know, the final, what the, what the negotiation is before the decision's made, then I'm okay with that.
Okay, 5-0. Go to staff, start, start this.
Public comment?
Yes, thank you, Barbara. Public, public comment? And then I'll bring it back.
If you wish to make a, a public comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
No speaker? Okay, I'll close public comment. Supervisor Medina?
Legal counsel? Just to make sure, legal counsel? Just to make sure when staff does negotiate this, they do bring it back to us. And from here forward, this is on a case-by-case basis. So, each business opportunity we have in the city, or the county going into the city, it will be looked at separately.
Yes, that's fine. And it will have to come back to the board for formal approval by the board of supervisors.
Perfect. Okay, let's move on to number 24, public hearing. Tracy? Oray?
I'll invite Enrique up here. Enrique Arriola. There's a PowerPoint presentation there. It's here on the screen, so I'm going to just go ahead and get started, and maybe I get some help. So, good morning, members of the board and the public. My name's Enrique Arriola. I'm Deputy Director for Community Services and Workforce Development. The purpose of this public hearing is, is to inform the public and the board of supervisors of activities that are being proposed under the 2020 CDBG application that's being submitted to community, to housing and community development, and to ask the board to approve the submittal of the application for funding to the state. I have dropped a sign-in log at the back of the room for those that are present and wishing to sign the sign-in sheet. This sign-in sheet is gathered and submitted as part of the application and proof of the public hearing. After this presentation, there will be an opportunity for the public to provide comment. The public may also submit written comments to our office directly to Community Services and Workforce Development. The online application will be made available at our offices for public viewing once the application is submitted via the online state portal. The application is due to the state June the 1st of 2020. This is a second of two public hearings that are being conducted to inform the public about the opportunity for the county to apply for CDBG funds available through the California Department of Community Housing Development, and for the county to receive public input. The first public hearing was held on Thursday, February the 20th of this year. A description of the CDBG program, eligible activities, and maximum funding available were stated in the public notice informing the public about the hearing. Our Department Health and Human Services Agency, Community Services and Workforce Development, has been successful receiving CDBG grants since 1995. We've received a variety of funds for the following activities, and there are others, but here are some of the highlights. Focusing on homeless and domestic violence, shelter assistance, building a childcare facility for low-income children, providing job training services for low-income residents, providing food assistance to low-income families for the constructions of the Home Resource Center, Phase 1 and also Phase 2, and also providing other services targeting our youth in our community. City, here are a couple of other highlights. In 2014, CDBG received a $1.5 million public facilities grant, and that's the grant that we used for the construction of Phase 1 Home Resource Center, which opened December 1st, 2017. In 2016, CSWD also received another $1.5 million public facilities grant for Phase 2 to support clients with job training services and other support services. That year, we also received $500,000 additional for public service activities. And those were $200,000 for shelter for victims of domestic violence, $200, $200,000 for operations of the Home Resource Center, $62,500 for youth activities for enrichment scholarship activities, and $37,500 went towards admin fees. The Community Action Board solicited pre-applications from interested organizations wishing to be considered for public service funding in subsequent county application. After several months of reviewing the pre-applications, the Community Action Board made recommendations for the programs that would be included as part of this application. So, under the pre-application process, Community Action Board selected through competitive processes, Community Homeless Solutions and Sun Street Centers. And I'll describe briefly the activities that they'll be undergoing. And the purpose of CDBG overall is to benefit targeted income group persons, which are low-income, and limited clientele, which includes homeless, domestic violence, individuals, migrant farm workers, and some other populations, eliminate slums and blight, and meet urgent community development needs. And here are some eligible activities under CDBG. Housing rehab, housing acquisition, real property acquisition, public service, public improvement, public facilities, public improvement in support of housing, new construction, and housing, new construction under the 2020 CDBG application we are proposing under the public service and public facilities eligible activities. For this year, we are applying for three and a half million dollars. This is the maximum that jurisdictions can apply for funds, of which $500,000 are earmarked for public service. And through the Community Action Board's pre-application process, $187,500 would be earmarked, should we be funded, to Sun Street Centers for their operations of the substance abuse programs that they have here in our community, and $275,000 operational funding for the Home Resource Center. This is operated by Community Homeless Solutions. We are always in need of operational support of the shelter and funded, these funds will be made available for that. And the remaining $37,500 will go towards admin fees to operate and provide these services. So, under the public facilities application, that is $3 million, and this will be for the construction of at least eight units for transitional housing, which will be located at the migrant center. There is some space, about an acre or so, and also constructing a community center and related site improvements for homeless persons, families that live here in the county. So, this project is focusing as a transitional shelter model for homeless families. And we've been working with RMA for this piece of the application. Applications for these grants are competitive. The county's applications will be rated and ranked against other city and county applications for public service activities in the areas of jurisdiction's poverty rate, benefit to target income groups and need for service, prior to CDBG grant performance, capacity for delivering the services, and leverage funding. The state anticipates the award announcements towards the end of the year, with contracts being provided for those that are awarded in early 2021. If there's any questions, let me know. And now with your permission, we could open this public hearing.
Handicake, the community center, have you guys picked a place where that's gonna be built at?
So, right on top of the migrant center, as you pass the housing center, is about an acre. And there's also an empty building that is not in use. It needs to be demolished. So, that empty building, the plans are for that to become a community center, about 3,000 square feet, along with the eight, approximately eight units that...
So, the community center's gonna be built on that side of San Bernardino County instead of where the more low-income members of the community on the west side of Hollister?
No, they're all gonna be built at the migrant center.
Everything's set to be at the migrant center?
Yes.
Including the community center?
Yeah, the community center. So, the community center would be right next to the basketball courts. Have you ever been?
Yes.
It's a building that's not really in use, and that's gonna be demolished.
And it's gonna serve migrant families?
That community center would be available for both the project, the intended population, and the migrant families during the peak season, when they're housed there.
I would've thought that made...
There's a big gap that we have there, and I think it'll be a great service.
I'm surprised because there's a big need for, for the west side of Hollister, for a youth center out there, but, okay. Okay, questions from the board?
If I could just clarify, it's not like a community center for the entire community. What it will be, it's a community or rec, or just a center for those within the premise.
Okay, okay. Okay, maybe, maybe I misunderstood it. Okay. Okay. Questions from the board before I open up to the public?
Chair, I just want to say I... I had the same concern you had, and when you clarified the last statement, that it's a, it's a, it's a center for the community there, that makes sense. It's not a community center. We are looking for a youth center, a community center for our entire community as well, but I get what you're saying now. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Let me open up to the public? Do we have any speakers?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
No? Okay. Let's wait a couple of seconds.
I'll have a question after.
Okay, I'll bring it back. Supervisor Batello?
Yeah, I was happy that the chairman, Supervisor Gilio, asked that question, Enrique, as far as the youth center. This is our CBG grant, and Hollister turns around, and then they ask for another one. Is that correct? Now, are they going to incorporate maybe a youth center in their side of the grant to service, may, perhaps the greater Hollister area, especially even this west side here?
I'm not aware of that, I'll be honest with you. I am aware that they're submitting a 2020 CDBG application as well. Under public service, they are earmarking $250,000 for the Home Resource Center operations. As far as a public facility, I'm not certain what the, the project entails.
Yeah, you know, that's one of the things that I really kind of hoped that, and advocated, that we cooperate and collaborate is a better word, with the city of Hollister, and how they're using their grant funding and our grant funding, and dealing with our mutual issues, whether it's homeless, youth programs, and, you know, addressing the, all the needs in the community, and it should be coordinated. And maybe that, that might be an area that maybe some discussion could, or input, you know, Hollister's a do what Hollister is a do. But, you know, we're all on this, you know, asking for the same thing, solving the same problems. So, just, just some thought, and maybe that, that comes up when the staff meets for the tax sharing agreement.
If I could just clarify one quick point. For a community-wide public facility such as a youth center, in order for a jurisdiction to be eligible, without any additional application processes, the entire community, San Bernardino County, must meet the poverty level income guidelines in our community by at least 50%. San Bernardino County is currently in 42 or so percent, so we don't meet it. Now, the, the work around that is, if we concentrate in a community with a certain block census groups that may meet it, so it would under, we would have to undergo through a, any income survey and assess the different community within certain perimeter, and if that community meets it, then we would be able to apply for that. So, that's something that we could certainly look at in the future.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, one of the things, if I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, I think it would be a worthwhile project, and that's one of the things that could be a real good project out on Bueno Vista Road. You know, and...
I agree.
We have, and that would be a great partnership, I think, with the city and, and the county.
And really quick, just to add also, the initial idea for public facility, Community Action Board had voted originally for a youth center, but after looking at the obstacles with not meeting the, the poverty income guidelines within the entire community, and it just seemed a little bit more out of reach, so the goal is to still pursue it and partner with the city, partner with the school district, and hopefully we could have a center here in years to come.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Enrique. I had a question, but Supervisor Medina answered my questions. Okay, thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Oh, Ray, what?
Oh, Ray? You want to?
Oh, I was just gonna echo the comments from Supervisor Batello. Also, you know, we have a dilapidated Briggs Building that we could probably use as well, which would be centrally located. I think that would be a really good spot as well, so obviously there's some work we can look at.
Okay, so we received the report. I opened up public hearings. Now, asking for direction from the board.
Okay. Well, I'll move for staff recommendation, and I guess to approve the, adopt the resolution. Let me see, what is the resolution?
Just say two, just say three and four.
Three and four.
Yep.
All right, well, Gilio, second. Do you need something very specific, legal counsel, or is that fine? Okay, thank you. Gilio, second.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Batello, second by Supervisor Gilio. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Handicake.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, now we go to, go to closed session. Barbara?
Closed session, conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivisions D two and E two of Government Code Section 54956.9, number of cases, one, potential litigation related to COVID-19.